Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the list is public safety. There is a fire call right now if we want to shift that over to the end and see if we do have Roger come in?
Sure.
Okay. So we want to start with recreation and tourism then?
Okay.
Okay.
Hello, I have one special event application that is in circulation right now and it is for the Seashore Ace Furniture Tent Sale that takes place August 31st, September 1st. This is their annual furniture tent sale. It's 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM held at the 95th Street parking lot that's to the west of the store. They're requesting some new parking signs in the spaces adjacent to the west wall excluding the handicap space. And they're putting up a tent for a furniture sale and the tent will just be up August 31st and September 1st. They will take it down the evening of September 1st. If anyone has any questions?
Anybody have any questions on that?
It's an annual event. I do have the insurance, Mr. Parzick.
I think they do this every year.
Yeah, Labor Day weekend, every year they do it.
Yeah, it's an annual event. It is in circulation, I'm just waiting for all the sign-offs from the department heads, but like I said, I have the insurance.
Okay.
That's the only event I have an application for right now. Upcoming borough events are the 4th of July fireworks and concerts, so we have a jazz and blues band at the 95th Street Beach Pavilion. They'll play from 7:30 to 9:30 followed by the fireworks. Then we will also have, the stage and sound company is going to provide music to accompany the fireworks display. They will provide a playlist that we will pre-approve prior. The next week we have the annual baby parade, which I'm working on.
What's the date of that?
The 8th.
The 8th, okay.
Monday, the 8th. So I'm working on that right now. I do have the Cunard Family of Clowns performing again and we've reserved the steel drum performer. Just got to get the word out.
And that's the Monday night, correct? The family that takes place, one of the families. If you could back up a second to the playlist and the music that's going to coincide with the fireworks. Where's the music going to be coming from? The barge? Like where is that?
No, it's the sound company that sets up the stage. He'll provide.
Oh, okay. So that'll be coming now, the speakers that are at the pavilion already?
Yeah. Yeah. He said in the past, he's, they've kind of just winged it at the last moment, but I said I'd like a playlist that we can pre-approve.
Okay.
Prior, because I think there were some issues with some choices in the past.
Okay.
We've had four successful Sunday farmers markets so far. I do still have two open spaces. There are at least two vendors interested, but they have their applications. I'm just still waiting to hear back from them. And I'm working on the Arts and Crafts Festival right now. I do have enough vendors to fill the event, so I do have a waiting list out there. The tents have been reserved, so we've already collected over $56,000 in fees.
So that's good. It's all taken, so it's a waiting list at this point?
At this point, yeah. Unless somebody backs, I mean, I could have someone back you out, it's possible.
Mm-hmm, good.
And that is everything I have.
Any questions for Jenny? On any events, anything?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we've been crazy busy down at the rec. The tennis building has been operating during the mornings right now, the new tennis building. Once we get the internet there this week, it will open up full-time, which is 8:00 to 12:00. And then free play starts from 12:00 to 4:00. And then again, the courts open up again for rental from 4:00 to 8:00. And then it'll be open starting next Monday, the 24th, for all pickleball and tennis operations.
So does that mean, what do you mean, hours-wise, what would that be?
We would, so we will be in there from 8:00 to 12:00.
Okay.
And then back in there, split shift again from 4:00 to 8:00.
Okay.
And then they'll be the ones that are closing the bathrooms and making sure that the courts are all locked up.
Okay.
Pro Sport, I don't know, I'm sure people have heard a lot of buzz. Pro Sport is here doing all the resurfacing. There's been a lot of cracks in the surfacing as far as the tennis courts and pickleball courts. Surface cracks, just from structure, foundation. So they've been here and they're doing patchwork. I just, before I came here, the 82nd Street Court looks literally like it's brand, brand new. So they sand everything down, they fill the cracks and then repaint it. So it looks, it looks, it looks really awesome. And Mr. Brogan is actually a resident here, so I think he's taking extra pride in his work because of Stone Harbor. So it's disrupting a little bit as far as people want to play, but luckily we have the pavilion that we could offer them to play basketball. And then he's working on the pickleball and tennis, just in time because we have the pickleball tournament this weekend.
Yeah.
So the ladies are really, really excited. It feels like they're playing on a brand-new pickleball court. So everything will be buttoned up by then. And then Monday, the 24th, all staff starts full-time again for, as far as the clinics and the leagues are also on the 24th. Some of the staff has been here as far as tomorrow and then Thursday they're doing the evaluations for the basketball league. So they're really excited to be back. And we actually backing up, a couple of them came down and helped out with the Blue and White Day at the elementary school. And it was, it was actually really, for, if being my first time, kind of being hands-on with it instead of just hearing about it, it was really awesome and the kids had so much fun. So that was, that's definitely an amazing event to be a part of and to be able to run it as the recreation department with it, which was really cool. And everything for 4th of July is already booked. As far as the speakers, home run derby, the slow bike race, bike parade, everything, trophies are in and stuff like that.
And how about all the preregistrations for the summer programs where it goes out first to the homeowners and?
Yeah, that opened up May 1st. Everyone-
So are the registrations pretty much this, on par with the last couple of years?
Uh, we're far exceeding numbers, actually.
Really?
We're up. We actually had to close a couple of the basketball leagues because they filled up so fast. So we've been crushing some dreams, but then somebody drops out and then we're making, then we're making dreams come true again. It's just hard. And we actually added an intermediate team. So we had eight teams last year and now we have enough to make another, so we're adding nine teams on for them, which is, I mean, it's a-
Good.
I don't know, if you guys are aware of the, our summer staff do a split schedule. So they come in 8:30 to 11:00 for the clinics and then they come back at 3:30 till about 10 o'clock to do coach and referee the basketball games.
And do the basketball games, yeah.
Yeah. So I was able to meet all the staff and they're awesome, so pretty confident and excited for-
Good, that's excellent.
For next Monday when everything starts going crazy.
When it starts.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Tina, at our committee meeting last time we met, we had a discussion about ladies bocce.
Sure.
And then there was a, quite a bit of a discussion on social media last week.
There was.
And I was wondering what the status of that is.
Tim has been told that he's down there, his six hours a week, being, I guess, what you guys call him, is the bocce commissioner, and he's officiating all of the bocce games on Wednesdays and Fridays.
Well, it was the recommendation of the committee not to do that.
It was.
Because-
Ten minutes.
When I was on the, when I played bocce, I served as the person who would be a referee because that's, that's basically all that it is.
Right.
And when Joan preceded me and then followed me on bocce, she did that. So then we just did a thing that if Frank's team and my team were playing and we had a question about a ball, we would just ask Reese's team to come over and call it. So are we, are we going to pay Tim at his rate to do that when it could be done by?
That's, that's what I've been told. That was my suggestion because we, it's a free, it is a free league and, but we organize it as far as the brackets, picking teams for them, going down and then having all the equipment there. But they were concerned, I guess, that they needed somebody there to measure the balls and officiate.
Do you feel like Tim has, you have the availability to do that?
Um, I was just, I was at first concerned because he is our facilities guy and always looking at things from a safety standpoint, where if something happened with playground, playground equipment or if a windscreen blew down, he is the person, I mean, I obviously am capable of doing it and will do it, but he's usually the guy that's on the grounds and he's the one that has that immediate relationship with Public Works where they would notify him. And my concern was now out of the, his work week, he, you know, six hours of it would be down doing bocce.
It's definitely worth mentioning insofar as this is a borough-sponsored event. We really don't have anyone there as a representative of the borough when-
We never did.
Pretty much do everywhere else. Well, that doesn't mean that-
Tim wasn't there in the past?
Tim would come and set up and distribute balls and then leave.
Yeah, it's like shuffleboard. We don't have anybody helping people with shuffleboard, right?
Well, I don't think, they are not registering as a league.
How about the men's league?
They're just going and playing.
How about the men's league? Do they have, does Tim-
Uh, they weren't as concerned as, as the women. The men, they, they, you know.
I have told Tina to, for next year, moving forward, to put in for a part-time employee so that will free Tim up, because I agree, we don't, I'd prefer to have someone not at the higher management level-
Right.
Doing that. So I have asked her for, moving forward into next year, since there's not money.
My concern was not so much whether Tim was down there or not. It was that, it was agreed upon at the committee meeting and then discussed on social media and changed.
Yeah, I think there might have been some miscommunication or lack of communication. I think the, the women didn't think that we weren't going to organize it at all. I think that they just thought that we were going to drop the balls off and they were going to have to pick their own teams, but it, as it being a recreation organized, like it's in our marketing material and our pamphlet, we do all the registration online. I don't, I think that they had thought that that was crumbling at some point.
Because something I saw said that, that we were not even doing registrations.
Yeah, and registration's been up and functioning since May 1st, just like everything else. So there was going to, that was not going to be interrupted. The only thing that was going to happen was Tim wasn't going to be spending his time down there, basically officiating bocce.
The teams were picked by everybody having a number and pulling them out of an envelope and it took five minutes.
Yep, that's what we did this year as well, because it started, it started last week.
How does the men's work?
Same way.
And do they get as many people or is there-
There are far, far more women that sign up.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yeah, I would say as of right now, we have close to 40 women.
Are they all playing at the same time or they, have they been divided?
I do not know about that. I know that it's every, every Wednesday starting at 9:00 AM.
Because last year we had a lot.
You did, you had like 70-something last year.
Right. And so what we did was move it, have an eight to 10 group and a 10 to 12 group.
Absolutely makes sense.
Tim wasn't there.
Is there two separate groups now or just one?
No, there's not, there's only 30-some that signed up.
So there's just one time slot there?
Correct, yep. And then they have, we organized a bracket and everything, so team one will play team two and then the results of that and everything gets posted online and we keep updating our website as well with their league, just like we would any other league that runs.
Judy, were you aware of this change, that Tim would be down there?
Yes, yes.
And this is free?
It's a free, it is a free-
Yeah.
I think if we put money into it next year, we should have a small charge.
Yeah, that's what Joe had said that Tina was doing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I had suggested that, but then I think-
We can't this year, I don't think.
Well, I just suggested before this even started and I think that we, the kind of response was that the ladies would give a lot of kickback from that.
To charge?
No, that they would charge, it's like $10?
They won't pay a nominal $10, $20 fee?
I, I said five. I started very minimal.
For the whole summer?
Mm-hmm.
I don't, five, four.
Did you say you asked them? You asked them, did you?
I tweet, I know that Tim had discussed that with some of the females.
They didn't like that?
No, they did not like that.
Well, but next, so next season you put that on your schedule?
Or $20 a registration?
And I think that the, for the balance of this season, I think you can reach Tim, can you not?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
If you need to get a hold of him, when he's standing there, you can reach him. And Public Works can reach him.
Yeah, it's not like it's very far if I needed to get in the gem car and drive down and get-
And then we, next year we'll build that into the, into the program, that there's a nominal fee to pay for a part-time employee-
Employee to go down and-
Act as referee or whatever-
Correct.
The bocce world calls those guys.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that's the way forward.
Sounds exciting. Our event for Labor Day weekend, have we had any more information or meetings for the tournament at the, on Labor Day, Monday, Sunday? I don't know which one I've viewed.
That would be Jenny.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I thought it was maybe, okay. It's getting close. Or, I'm sure.
Traveling the world, playing rugby.
Yeah. Good, good, good.
That's the rugby she's talking about.
Yep.
Right, yes.
Two days or one day? Is it two days or one day?
One, one day.
Just one day.
Sunday.
And it's just the Sunday?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for recreation. You want to go-
Do you want to do natural resources?
Go natural resources, okay. I don't know if he's coming.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have a fairly short report for you. I'll start with the point. It's been a pretty good week out at the point so far for the most part. There are lots of active nests out there. There are chicks kind of all over the place and they're getting big. This information is from the NJDEP, from the Endangered Non-Game Species Program, from their site monitoring and they send that information weekly during the season to both Jill and I, to us, so we can make sure the stewards understand where birds are and such. Right now there are two active pairs of piping plovers. There's a third pair on site and there's actually an additional pair that's sort of hanging around, which is interesting. So there's four pairs down there. Two of them, one pair, Petunia and Stanley, if you must know, have two chicks and they're inside the fenced area. There's estimated fledge on about the 26th or so. They had a third chick that hasn't been seen in a little while. There's another pair that have a nest that has not hatched yet. That one's estimated to hatch later next week. It's creating quite the stir. There's lots of folks down there with big cameras and big lenses to see them. If you've never seen a chick, they look like a cotton ball with two toothpicks. They're like teeniest little things ever. They're pretty darn adorable. Those are federally threatened, so it's also pretty exciting. But to my knowledge, that's the only, those are the only nesting pairs in Cape May County are on Stone Harbor Point. There are 25 pairs of American oyster catchers. Those are species of special concern. 24 have nests, all of them are in the fenced area. Seven nests have hatched and those guys are expected to fledge, which means when they can fly sometime between the 23rd and July 17th. Other nests are expected to hatch between the 15th of June, which was last, this is last week's data, and the 9th of July. And they're pretty darn cute, too. They're a little bit bigger, but they're out there following mom and dad around. The black skimmers are down, all the way down at the point. These guys are kind of spread out in the edge of the dunes. If you get all the way down towards the point, there's two outlier dunes way down. There are about 250 black skimmers down there in two different colony pieces. Those are state endangered and they're on two different sort of dunes separated out and there's about 80 common terns down there. Those, so the skimmers are state endangered, the terns are special concern species. So right now it's going pretty well. There's a lot of activity down there, so there's a lot of folks that are coming down specifically to see these birds out there. If you haven't been down there, it's worth a walk, they're kind of cute. The police patrols and beach stewarding down there is, are going well. The marine patrol and the police send a report that goes to Jill and also up to both the US Fish and Wildlife and the state. The May report, they had done three patrols in May and they had actually given verbal advice to 14 boats that that was a no landing zone. So in only three patrols, 14 is actually quite a bit. So they are, these are meetings we had and talked about and clarified what the ordinances were and helped everyone kind of understand what's happening. So that has been going fairly well. At the end of June, we'll see if that, how that's changed. The stewards have been on duty daily since Memorial Day. They're educating people, they're managing disturbance events, mostly right now, talking to people, kind of letting them sort of know where the birds are, but not exactly where the birds are. And they're pretty excited to see these guys as well. As I said, I was out there the past two weekends, of course, with the big camera every time. I try to go with a camera to take a picture. They're not out, they're hiding back in the dunes, but just seeing a lot of folks out there, a lot of people coming from far away to see these guys, so it's kind of a neat, a neat thing that's going on out there. They're quite the draw. At Stone Harbor Bird Sanctuary, the tours are ongoing and going well. The docents are out there. Right now it's Sunday, as soon as we get to July, it's Saturday and Sunday, 10 o'clock, leaving from the Second Avenue entrance at Ewitt Espy. The sanctuary committee met last week and they're moving forward with website updates. That's good, they've been feeding those. And now that we have control of Facebook page, which is awesome, the borough is managing that and they're, you know, capturing events here and there and posting and sending them up through the chain and getting them posted. So there's now accurate information on the Facebook page as well as different things happening. I believe they're getting ready to post pictures of the before and after of the benches to let folks know we're doing stuff out there. A lot of stuff is flowering out there, so it looks really good in the sanctuary right now. The committee is working on the replacement signage that was for the pump house and Holly Path. This is part, this is already budgeted, so they're working on that. As soon as we get those, they'll start going through graphic design. That'll be a fall install by the time we get to that. Just the turnaround time and getting everything done, it'll be in the fall. And Public Works will be, or has already, not sure of the answer, that moving a faded sign related to the Penn Horticultural Award for the gardens that was placed, it was on, it was near the Holly Path entrance. It was completely faded, you basically couldn't read it anymore. So that sign came down, but we had a picture of the plaque that was, these were for the original gardens after the restoration. So we posted that plaque and information about the award on the, on the website. So it's kind of permanently there and recognizing that that award was received. And we're able to drop the number of signs in the sanctuary by one more, because I know Ray likes signs. That's my report. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to-
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're going to have a Fish and Wildlife, maybe at the next-
July 2nd meeting is my understanding?
Next one?
The state, the federal, the federal Fish and Wildlife has confirmed, but the state has not, correct?
Correct. I did have a conversation with the state today and it does not appear that they will be coming. In fact, they've asked if we could gather up the questions and send it to me and then I would send it to them and then they would answer it that way. They said they would come and meet with three council members at a time if council so desires, but they did not feel that it would be beneficial to come to a workshop meeting. They would prefer to be able to answer it in writing, have the questions in advance and answer it in writing. So I would say whatever questions anyone has, if you want to forward it to me.
I think there's only one question. Isn't there a more humane way than a snare trap slash cable trap? It's really the only one question. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's any more questions than that.
I think that if we all think about it, there should be more questions. You know, there's, we, you know, we have been successfully maintaining this area, at least since I've been on council from 2012 on, and this situation again is one that is controversial or however you want to say it. But I do think that what we need to understand is that since 2012, we have an incredibly good relationship with all of these agencies. And I think that we need to understand what they all do for us and what we do for them as good stewards. And I just don't want to risk anything, any of the progress that we have made. And we've made a lot of progress. And all those agencies do help Stone Harbor in many ways. So I, I think you said to submit questions to you, Jill? Us to-
That was their suggestion.
I, I, I think that's fair. I think you'll get the answers, the question, but I think there's probably more than one question.
They didn't, they met with natural resources, right? Past month or?
Correct. Yes, they met with natural resources, they've met with Judy and-
I wasn't there. I would like, I would like, and I'm sure some other council members may like to meet with them and hear what they have to say. So, I mean, I don't know who would want to join me, three of us- I definitely would. And just talk to them. So I don't know the process for setting that up, just because I would like to also talk to them, not only about your question, which is the primary one, but what are the hunting alternatives here? If, if that an option?
But that's all, that's what I'm saying, that's the one question.
Make the list of questions and they will answer them.
I think it's more than just one question. I think there's data that needs to be collected. We have heard the use of the word carnage in connection with trapping the foxes, which would lead someone to believe that there is a wholesale slaughter going on down at the point. And I, I don't know, but I think that's one of the questions that needs to be addressed. How many foxes have been trapped? What has been done with them? Where do they take them? And what do they do? My wife asked me today about what happens if there are baby foxes in the, in the grounds? What happens to them? So it's, it's more than just, I agree, your, your basic point is correct, but it's more than just that.
Well, I, I think it's unfortunate that the public will not be given an opportunity to perhaps ask questions as well or to, and in, to give more information and educate people is certainly always good and that's exactly the opportunity we were affording them.
I think they're still offering it by making a list of questions.
The state apparently is not. They're not coming. That's what Jill just said, they're not coming. They'll meet with council people in groups of three.
Correct.
So I just think that's unfortunate and we'll submit our questions to Jill and-
You've got the answers.
Because we can't drag them kicking and screaming up to the podium, so.
This is a new guy dumb question, but how is the state gets to determine how this hearing is going to be handled? Who, who put them in charge of saying how this is going to be done when we have specifically requested that they send representatives here to explain the situation, not only to us, but to the public as well?
I do not know the answer to that, do you?
Who, well, the acting chief expressed today, he called and indicated that they, they felt that they've, they've answered our questions and that if there's anything specific that we feel that they have not answered, to put that in writing and they would be more than happy to respond in writing to that.
Is that the acting chief of the Tuckahoe office or whichever one, that local office? Is that who it is? When you say the acting chief of where?
For the state.
For the state, okay.
Correct. My conversation on Friday on my way home with Eric trading for the federal, he had indicated that if the state was not able to make it, he would want to delay, he would not come without them. So based on this conversation, I will have to reach back out to him to see if in fact he would want to come alone. I don't know that answer yet, because I just had that conversation today.
Is the state not willing to come to a meeting, period, or just not on July 2nd?
They will not come to a public meeting, period. They would however be willing to meet because they understand the restrictions that we have. They said they would answer questions from council, but they did not want to make, they did not want to come and participate in any type of public banter back and forth.
We could do a workshop that does not have public comment.
That's what I had offered to them.
Because there is no, then, in the workshop, that's normally, the questions only come from council and public does not, there is no public comment at that point, so you did offer that option or?
Yeah, that was originally scheduled for that. I mean, I can relay that back.
Because it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a situation where it, you know, we would turn into mayhem because there's no public comment. It would just be, it could give us the information that they feel is most important, we know, we can ask questions.
And also if they want to meet with us three at a time, are they aware of the fact that they may have to conduct two sessions? And also, if they want to meet with us three at a time, are they aware of the fact that they may have to conduct two sessions?
Yes.
And that's okay with them?
That, that was okay.
Well, I would suggest that maybe we get back to them and say it was discussed at the council meeting today, and that we would ask that they reconsider their position.
And maybe clarify that it's not, we will make sure that it is conducted in a civil fashion, and we're not going to allow there to be any sort of verbal assaults or anything of that nature. There, like I said, there, there won't be public banter back and forth, because there is not during the work session. As you can see in the past, we try to keep that at an absolute minimum where we engage the public during work sessions.
But we can ask the public to submit their questions in advance to Jill, who could ask those questions.
Yes, and then that, that would also give an opportunity for the public to have some questions, yes, and then it could all be tempered properly and.
Good idea.
Want to reach out and just see how that works?
I will reach out and see how that works.
Okay, okay.
And if that doesn't, I mean, I would, I would still like.
I would say nothing stops you from doing, setting up those meetings with council people at all, not, nothing at all, I would encourage that.
Yeah, Reese, Reese spoke with them, but I know Mantora and Frank and Charles and I have not, so, I mean, I'd like to hear what they have to say, you know?
Yeah.
Their side of the story, so to speak.
Anything else for natural resources?
Not for me. I have nothing else.
Public safety.
Court?
Good afternoon, I keep losing my voice off and on. I really have nothing to tell you today, I know you don't want to hear that, things are getting, picking up, parking tickets, careless drivings, some drug charges, but other than that, it's the normal run-of-the-mill for summer, so.
It's all good.
Off to a good start.
What was that?
Off to a good start, he said.
Oh, yeah, off and running.
Off and running.
Police Department.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Welcome, Mr. Daleahan, good to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Monthly report for the Police Department for May, there were sixty-seven motor vehicle stops and three adults were arrested. By the end of this month, we will be fully staffed with full-time and part-time officers. In terms of, I mentioned it last month, our accreditation process, Captain Palmer, Sergeant Barlone, and I attended our commissioner's hearing on June thirteenth, and we received final approval for our accredited status. So we're just waiting on a certificate, and we'll be accredited until 2022, when the whole process will start all over again.
Good work.
Congratulations.
Yep, it's a big job.
Thank you. As everyone knows, we began conducting plainclothes beach patrols on Memorial Day weekend, it seems to be fairly successful, word has gotten out. And the complaints, as of right now, are the minimum to none, so we will continue that process randomly throughout the season and, and see how it goes. Hopefully, you know, it changes from last year, that's all I have.
And how's the new building working now, that you're in it and working and in full operation?
If this smile doesn't tell the story, then I don't know what does.
Good.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, lifeguard.
Good afternoon, during the past month, we had two bathers rescued, two surfers were rescued, one catamaran. There were three EMS calls, and five lost children were found. We held our annual tryout on Sunday, May twenty-sixth, we hired sixteen new guards, and they are currently being trained along with the returning group. And that's all I have.
Did you fill every spot with the hiring of the sixteen?
No, we're still about six short, five or six short.
Do you do another, is there another tryout that happens, that's scheduled, or?
No one's applied.
Oh, okay.
So we're, we're a little thin.
Okay.
We are a little thin.
Might be time for a comeback.
Come on back.
So that's a function of salary?
I'm sure that's part of it.
Daily, per day, and whatever you call it.
It's difficult to, or I would say impossible to rent a place, you know, for college kids to rent a place around here, so there are other factors, too.
Do you have data on what the other towns are paying lifeguards?
We're probably at the upper end of it, but they're all, you know, they have, they have available housing or affordable housing for people to have, you know, group rentals and things like that. We in Avalon are a little different, you know, the cost of living's a little higher.
Yeah.
So.
Understand.
It's a unique problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something?
Well, Sandy, I just have one question, if I may. A homeowner approached me this last week and told me about a situation that happened, we live on Hundred and Tenth Street, and it was at the, at that location where he was saying that someone was injured, and I would just want to make sure that you're aware of it, and he was attributing it to the, to the, to the pipes that are what caused that injury.
There, that, there were two surfers, and the current was very strong from, from the north. They washed over the outfall pipe on one-eleven, and a guard, the guards went in, and one of the guards was injured, they were washed over the, the pipe. He's okay now, he, he, it was all minor, the scrapes and everything, everyone was okay. But I do suggest at some point, we've had numerous injuries over the years with that pipe, and I, I, I would suggest the borough look into some way to remove it. However, that would have to be done, I don't know, but we've had a number of surfers and lifeguards over the years injured at that location.
Okay.
Do not see.
I do not see JT.
And fire report is there, in the middle of a fire hall.
In the middle of a, right.
And they've been very busy last.
I know, I can hear the sirens, they have been very busy. Oh, you're just in time. Come on in.
I tried to do your report for you.
Good afternoon, perfect timing.
Report for May for the Fire Department, we had twenty fire calls for the month, we're right on track with last year's total fire calls. EMS, we had forty-three, we were actually twenty-nine ahead of last year for EMS calls. It's been a busy couple, couple of months. The calls included two building fires, one cover assignment, eight fire alarms, one search, one multi-fire, one elevator rescue, three medical assists, one surf rescue, one natural gas leak, and one arcing wires. That's my report.
The couple of fire and sea owl, did you guys, did we cover Avalon?
Yes.
Okay. And they're going all the way around? Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Roger, I'm sorry, we have a resolution for the fireworks that's on the agenda?
Yes.
And when I looked through all the supporting documents, I know you guys are on top of this, but Jenny's there, but all, all the insurance forms are blank. And I, I just, do we have to submit anything to JIF for that municipal extended?
I have all the insurance forms from the company, they all named the, the proper, they have to, they get a permit from me and from Middle Township, and they all meet the criteria for the amount of insurance and the named parties, they shouldn't be blank, but I have, I have copies with.
So we're okay with, we're okay with this JIF?
It was at the JIF, JIF issued their permit, so they wouldn't have issued without the insurance.
Joe Miola approved it just this week, everything.
All right, thanks.
All right.
That completes public safety. Okay. So we have a resolution to go into closed session, and I have a question for the solicitor, or for everyone. Is it necessary for us to go into closed session to discuss this particular topic, since we've been discussing it publicly already? You know what I mean?
No, I, I mean, I, well, yeah, no, I'm saying.
Just because I'm just saying, we're going in, and it, it is something that just recently, even at the POA meeting, recently.
It's out there.
It's all completely out there, so to speak, yes, and, 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 actually, Frank had an interesting question a couple of weeks ago to me. He said, at what point, once it's out there, is it no longer closed session? And when do you put it, just discuss it? And I thought about that today, at what if, and because Frank, because when, when Frank had spoken to us about this a couple of months ago, and then I spoke to him, and we talked all about it and so on and so forth, and that was his question to me. At what point can you discuss it openly, doesn't everybody know everything now?
So it's not mandatory that you go in relative to contractual matters? The general thinking is that until you have something signed, the better practices to go in to avoid outside interferences or something, until you have a signed document, and then at that point, you can release it, but it's not mandatory.
So how do people, it's not, we could go into closed session, it's just something that I wanted to bring up to everybody.
I don't think it's necessary, this is, first of all, the stage we're at right now is so preliminary that.
What do you think? I mean, people just let me know what you think.
I think I'm, I, I would welcome discussion publicly on this.
That's fine by me.
On a closed session, I'm not aware of more than one?
I got no list of closed, I was only told of one matter, so if there's more than one, we can certainly go in.
The Ninety-third Street Pump Station, we had just gotten some information, I didn't know whether we wanted to update or not on that one. I can do that via email if you want, that's fine.
Okay, good, yeah, because I wasn't, I didn't know there was another, another one.
I mean, my suggestion relative to contractual matters is until you have an actual signed contract, it's probably a good idea to maintain the closed session. And after the agreement has been executed, then you really don't have a reason to do that.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go, then, your advice is go in the closed session? Okay.
It's not mandatory, but my suggestion would be until there's a signed document, that's what I would do.
Okay, then, at this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go into private session, we would appreciate if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back into public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session, or to simply adjourn. It is also possible that someone might bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. Resolution two thousand nineteen S one oh seven.
Mayor Council, I offer resolution two thousand nineteen dash S dash one oh seven for adoption.
Second?
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.